Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the August 10th meeting of the Bellingham City Council. Just to note that the Bellingham City Council meets all requirements of the State of Washington Open Meetings Act. Would Rick Sepler lead us in the flag salute?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Dan Hamel.
Here.
Jane Knutson.
Here.
Michael Liliquist.
Here.
Roxanne Murphy.
Here.
Pinky Vargas.
Here.
Jack Weiss.
Here.
Terry Bornham.
Here.
Okay, we will now go to our 15-minute public comment period. And as you'll see, once you get up to the dais, we have a new three-minute clock, so you'll have ample opportunity to see how much time you have left. The buzzer will go off at three minutes. So our first name on the list, first three names is James, Frank Youngblood, and Judy Collins.
Do I get to press the start button?
No, she'll press the start button. Go ahead, sir.
Consciousness Mayor, faithful council members, fellow citizens, my name is James. I'm a citizen of Bellingham, registered voter, taxpayer, and a homeless combat veteran. I have 15 years' experience inter with the homeless community. Have currently been in some sort of form of homelessness since May 1st, 2010. The issue I wish to educate city council and the public about is systemic contributions to homelessness. The core value which drives me to speak to how the system contributes to homelessness is objectivity. When we last met on July 27, 2015, I shared with you that I was rejected by a local housing services provider simply because I did not have two current years of rental history. What I didn't have time to share was that this was the second opportunity this provider had to enable me to get off the streets, and if I, with all of my qualifications, am having this much trouble getting off the streets, imagine how difficult it is for homeless citizens who have real issues. Quite frankly, it puzzles me that a provider who claims to help the homeless would establish such a rigid barrier to keep a citizen in the streets, because when you work with the homeless, it doesn't take long to understand that one being homeless is the same thing as one being houseless, which in turn often means one would not likely have two current years of rental history. If the provider was a fisherman, I along with other homeless citizens were fish, we would be the big ones that are getting away, simply because they have created barriers that prevent them from catching us. A representative of this provider was at the most recent coalition to end homelessness meeting, and she was rightly crowing about the opening of Francis Place, which they expect to fill by the end of October 2015. Ask her if her organization was going directly to the Lighthouse Mission and take home assistance, because there they could likely fill Francis Place by the end of August 2015. After all, motivated fishermen go where the fish are, and at the Lighthouse Mission, the fish are so abundant, they're almost leaping out of the water. No, this unmotivated provider is not going directly to the Lighthouse Mission, rather working through a middleman, which too often delays recovery, increases costs, and creates yet another systemic contribution to homelessness. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, James.
Thank you.
Frank Youngblood, Judy Collins, Jackie James, and Patrick McKee.
My name is Frank Youngblood. I live at 1230 Indian Street, and I spoke here a couple of weeks ago regarding the...
Frank, could you get closer to the mic so we can hear you?
Regarding the name change of the street. I spoke with Michael Liliquist after the meeting, and he said that changing the sign would be a small symbolic gesture to begin to heal the wounds. And I spoke with Roxanne Murphy after the meeting, and you made it clear that we are definitely changing the name to Billy Frank Jr., but you're committed to changing the neighborhood as well, which is what I'm committed to since I live there. What I just passed out is a copy of a letter that I'm sending to Western Washington University, hoping that I can address the issue of the late-night shuttle bus that careens up and down Indian Street, and particularly stops at the blue bus line directly in front of my building, where groups of 20 and 30 screaming kids congregate. And I need that to change, and I need your help to help me make it change. I'm willing to do something else as well. On the south side of my building, there is a mural that was created and executed by Lanny Little, who used to do murals here in our town all the time. He is retired, but I spoke with him, and he would be willing to come out of retirement to create a new mural for that space depicting the history and the culture of Salish people, indigenous peoples. Maybe it could be something directly related to Billy Frank Jr., to kind of begin to bring a new tenor to the neighborhood and really create something of a little more substance and get people thinking along those lines. But again, I need your help. That stretch of Indian Street, talk about healing wounds, is so wounded, it needs to be scraped and repaved, and I need your help to get that done. It needs to be put on a schedule. Mr. Anthony, please get it on the schedule. And with that, I hope you'll read this and please take it seriously, and I would look forward to any input, especially from you, Roxanne, regarding how we can move forward on this thing, because I'm ready to do the mural if you want it. So that's assuming the street name is definitely being changed, and you indicated that it was. So I'm on board, but I pay a lot of property taxes in that area, and I want to see something done to improve the neighborhood. So with that, thank you very much.
Thank you, Frank. Judy Collins, Jackie James, and Patrick McKee.
Hi, I'm Judy Collins at 210 East Horton Road. As the council already knows, I've been trying to get water to my property for several years now. At this point, it looks like getting into UGA is my best option. I realize I'm a small parcel, but I counted it up, and from my place east to Dr. Perry's, there's 25 acres that are buildable. And from Dr. Perry on, there's at least 50 acres down there. We've walked down there and looked. So there is more area to include in the UGA if I'm not enough. I think I'm enough, but you could go farther down there. I'd like you to consider me to be in the UGA. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Jackie James, and end up with Patrick McKee, then we'll go to our public hearing.
Hi, I'm Jackie James, and I live at 2805 Elm Street here in Bellingham, and I'm calling to see you tonight about goats. My mother was here a couple of years ago and did a little bleeding when she left. Anyway, we still have the problem with the goats, and since then, I've done some, a little more looking into what other communities do with goats. And most of them require like a quarter of an acre per livestock, small livestock. And the neighbor that I'm talking about, her property, their property, is .018 of an acre. They have three large goats, and they had four babies, which are still there. They're very annoying, they smell, they bring lovely animals into the neighborhood, and the neighbors next door to them have already sold their house and moved. So what I'm here to tell you and suggest today and hope that you will think about is I think it needs the zoning or the codes, the municipal, whatever it is that you call it, it needs to be corrected so that people that have and want things like goats have more acreage so that it doesn't offend the neighborhood, and so that the animals have a place to graze. I mean, these animals don't have any, there's no grazing there at all, because there's no room. I mean, that .018 also includes the house. So that's why I'm here today, as I really think that we need, it's okay if people want to have farm animals in town. I mean, I understand that, but I think there should be some rules on that, because it's very offensive to the neighborhood. And that is why I'm here, and thank you for taking it into consideration.
Thank you. Patrick McKee.
Good evening, members of the council. Patrick McKee, Grant Street in Bellingham. This afternoon, the council's planning committee voted to endorse the median population projection figure to be used by the city for planning for the next 20 years. This median figure for population growth was endorsed by the planning department staff, who said that this figure reflected historical population increases over the years in Bellingham. I'm here tonight to say that the historical figures should not be used by this current council. Conditions existed in the 1990s and early 2000s, conditions like a lot of land available, land that was easy to build on, impact fees that were either nonexistent or very low, a lot of historical conditions which encouraged larger population increases, and those conditions do not exist today. Land is, land supply is diminished, land is more difficult to build on, and our impact fees are much higher because growth is legitimately supporting growth. So I would say to you that a more accurate population projection to support would be that which has occurred in the last five years, and that would be the low population figure. You can use that figure, because you have within the city, without expanding into the UGAs, plenty of capacity to support either the median or the low figure, but why not use the low figure? Because it would require less planning for infrastructure, less costs for infrastructure. Why not embrace a low population figure? Even if the low population figure turns out to be inaccurate, you can adjust a comprehensive plan in five years. Why not support slow, wisely planned growth within the city? Why do we have to use a population figure that is not likely to occur, which would perhaps drive growth, rather than predict what is naturally going to occur? So I would ask the council majority to support the low population projection figure in their planning for the next 20 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. We will now go to our first public hearing. It's a public hearing, consideration of an application for a Bureau of Justice grant in the amount of $21,213.
I would.
It could be a little wide with the computers.
Thank you, Gene. Members of council, Clifford Cook, Chief of Police. Before Chief Simon begins her brief presentation, I would like to make a couple of comments. As you know, this is required as part of the application process for this Bureau of Justice grant. I think there's been some misinformation in regards to what this software will do for us, and so I'd like to clarify one or two points before flow begins. Predictive or forecasting software generally can be divided in four broad categories. The first, predicting crimes. The second, predicting offenders or potential offenders. The third, predicting perpetrators' identities. And the fourth, predicting victims of crime. The software we're considering does not do any of the last three. It is strictly about taking information that is in our current RMS, based upon reported crime reported by the community, and from that information, trying to forecast where we are likely to see those crimes repeat themselves. Some may say, why do you need the software if this is something you're currently doing, which we are? The software provides our analysts with the capability of providing a report to us and from which we can deploy resources with the intent to prevent crime. Ordinarily, and currently, our analyst has to do this by hand. To look at crimes, specific crimes such as burglary of a residence, over a five-year period is a huge amount of data. It takes days to analyze, and frankly, it is a highly subjective process, because the individual doing the analysis has to rely solely on subjective review. The software provides us with a means whereby we can refine that information and more narrowly define where we should deploy resources in the city. I think there will be a number of concerns expressed this evening. We are very much interested in wanting to listen to those concerns as a means of identifying where we need to emphasize communication back to the community, but also in a way to allay fears about the software that I believe are going to be based on other agencies in other states used in the other three categories I mentioned. It is not my desire, nor is it my intent, for this software to be based on personal information about individuals. There are studies. Rand Corporation for one. And I would invite the council to look at that study. But I'm also making this decision based on my own personal experience. Since 1996, as part of my community policing experience, as part of my responsibilities as a deputy chief in the 13th largest city in this country, as the chief in Van Nuys, Washington, where I not only practiced and encouraged community policing, but I also utilized predictive policing software. My belief is it can be used productively, barely, and constitutionally, and that is my intent, and that is my assurance to you and the members of this community.
Flow. Thank you, Chief.
Well, our computer's just a little slow here. I'll see if it can load, but in the meantime, Flo Simon, Deputy Chief, Bellingham Police. It's nice to be with you this evening. If I can pull up my email here, I'll get a PowerPoint for you. Was it included in your packet by chance?
No. Let's see.
Yes, sir.
Software timeout. Okay, there we go.
There it is.
Good job.
All right. Predictive policing, what is it? Really, it's a tool that's going to provide our patrol officers with additional crime reduction powers. It, like the chief stated earlier, it is linked to our records management system, which we own, our Longarm system, and also our computer automated data, which is our CAD system, and it pulls out locations where crimes have occurred, the time and date where the crime occurred, and the type of crime that has occurred. And it puts all of that on a map for us so that we can see it in real time. And you can view it from a time period, a specific time period. So if I wanted to look at a two-week period where a rash of, let's say burglaries occurred, I could go to the map, put in burglary, put in my times, and it would show me everywhere in Bellingham that a burglary has occurred. The benefit of doing this is it shows officers in the field where specific crimes are occurring in their beats, and so when they have unassigned time, they can focus on those areas and try to reduce the potential for that crime occurring somewhere else near that neighborhood. What this also does is it allows the public to view the same thing that we view, only it doesn't give you specific addresses, it gives you block numbers, but it'll give you the time that it occurred, and it'll give you the type of crime and a little bit synopsis of the crime. So you can pull up your neighborhood every day and see what's occurred the night before. And if you want to receive email alerts when crimes occur in your area, in your neighborhood, then you can sign up for those. And one of the reasons that we were looking at bear analytics was because that was one of the benefits that they provided for the public, was free access to see the same types of things that we're seeing. So you can sign up for the email alerts, you can also provide anonymous tips if you choose to do so. This is what a map that the citizen would look at, so all those little blurbs on there are a type of crime, and like I said, there is a myriad of crimes that we can put in there, from burglaries to theft, vehicle prowls, DUIs, whatever we want to set that parameter to be, you can look that up. And then it talks about hotspots and the frequency of crime. So the next slide you're going to see is what a hotspot would look like, and it's regression analysis in that it takes what has occurred in the previous time that you indicate up to the date of today, if you choose that, and it shows you how that crime wave has moved across that area, and it predicts, forecasts where you might want to spend most of your resources, where you might want to deploy more patrol officers. And so by doing that, you reduce the potential for crime, and I think you do a better job of servicing the neighborhoods that you have. This doesn't replace what police officers know and deal with in their beat, it enhances what they already know. It puts it all on a map form where, like Chief Cook said, our crime analysts would spend hours and hours and hours just researching one type of crime. For example, a couple of years ago, we had rooftop burglaries. Our crime analyst, it took her days to put all of that on the map with the times, the locations, and to forecast where she thought the next one would hit. And so usually, you're two or three days behind the eight ball. This program would give you that same type of information, but it would be instantaneous. And we did catch that rooftop burglar, but I think we would have caught him a lot sooner had we been able to employ an automated system. So that, really in a nutshell, is what the software will do for us. It does not take into account people, personal information. All it takes into account is the time, date of crime, the location, and the type of crime.
Okay, thank you, folks. Any quick questions before we open up the public hearing, Terry?
Not a quick question, just a comment, just for those testifying, that this isn't a hearing like we usually have hearings. Most hearings we have, comments are directed to the council so that we can take those comments and use them in helping make our decisions. This one is directed for the Police Department Administration, because we're not making any decision on this. Decisions have been made, and so we're not going to be voting on this, we don't have input on this, so I just wanted to make it clear that this is a little different kind of hearing, and because most people aren't aware of that when they come to the hearing, usually you expect us to make decisions on it, and that's not something that happens in this particular types of grants.
Okay, thank you, Terry. We won't make it quick.
Well, as Terry points out, this isn't a hearing for us, this is really a hearing for the administration. I don't expect answers to these questions, but there are a few questions that I would ask, I am asking as a citizen. How good are the data? How accurate will they be? Will they be corrected, updated, revised, audited, so that they're accurate? That's one question. Is there some algorithm of prediction, and is that publicly available? Will that algorithm be vetted? Will that algorithm be hidden so the bad guys don't go online and find out about it? And then third, which crimes will be included? Will they be given greater weight or attention? Which ones are we selecting and why? Those would be my questions.
Okay, let's open the public hearing. Well, you can ask those questions after the public hearing. The first three names, Janet Marino, Scott Lepple, and Rosalind Again.
My name is Janet Marino, and I'm the Executive Director at Watcom Peace and Justice Center, and I'm very relieved to hear the department say that this software's not going to be using personal data, because the three communities that we've been reviewing and looking over are New York City, using this and replacing their stop and frisk policy, Chicago, which actually has developed a hot sheet of 400 individuals that they believe are likely to commit crimes, and of course, Maricopa County's Sheriff Joe Arpaio, which we know has inherent problems from the get-go there. So I'm glad to hear that they won't be using personal data to compile where they're going to have an enhanced police presence. I just got back from six days of camping to find that we had six, seven days notice on this, so I'm feeling a little bit like this was slid right through before anybody could notice, but clearly, some people have noticed that this is going to be in use. We already have plenty of evidence that low-income and communities where people of color live are disproportionately being stopped, detained, and cited for low-level personal drug use and other nonviolent factors, even though we know that personal drug use is higher among white folks. Now we can count on a computer algorithm to determine that an increased police presence in those neighborhoods can preemptively prevent crime from occurring. I'm hoping that this is primarily going to be focused on burglaries and not low-level drug use or nonviolent crimes. Like I said, in Chicago, low-level infractions and even associations with troublemakers socially can land you on the Chicago 400, a list that the department keeps of people likely to commit crimes. There are already instances of Chicago PD preemptively showing up on people's doorsteps and letting them know that they're being watched, so they better stay in line. Sounds like we're not going to be using it that way, and I don't know if the software that we're looking at can be changed down the road, say if Chief Cook were no longer in command of the Police Department to utilize personal data, but that's a little frightening to me. In a time when we're simultaneously working to demilitarize and rehumanize our policing and criminal justice systems, this seems contraindicated of community policing to me. We all want the latest gadgets and toys at our disposal, but we've already made it clear that that's not the kind of community that we want to live in. I'm not convinced that this will reduce violent crime in Bellingham, looking at Chicago's statistics. The majority of violent crime that occurs in Bellingham is people who know each other in domestic violence rather than random acts of violence. I'm not convinced that this is going to prevent people from getting their hammocks and their trumpets and their mailboxes stolen and petty theft, but I am concerned that it's going to target people who are trying to get their lives together, who are living in poorer neighborhoods, who maybe smoked pot or shoplifted or whatever idiotic thing that I can think of that every other teen I've known has done, but predominantly poor brown teens get punished for. And saying that, whoop, I've run out of time. I'll wrap that up.
Thank you, Janet.
All right. I just want to say this, I'm concerned that this will take the tenuous data that we already collect and spit out skewed data and increase the police presence in neighborhoods where we already have skewed data.
Thank you. Thank you. Go ahead, sir. Scott Lepel? At you. Am I pronouncing it right?
It's Lepela.
Lepela, okay. Thank you.
Pretty close. I get a lot of versions. That's a good one. All right, I want to thank the council and the chiefs for coming out, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak. So many people will probably do a better job than I will, but I, one of my recent jobs before I joined Bellingham, I've been here, I've lived in this community now for a year, I live over on Bill McDonald, and before that, I lived in Maricopa County. So there's that. So I can tell you a little about how, I'm glad to hear you're not going to use it the same way. If you want an example of how not to use anything, it's probably a good place to go. The other piece is that while I was in Maricopa County, I used to sell software. So I will say that oftentimes, you get your best results in a software purchase when you have the most time for comment and feedback. The times when I saw what I felt were clients making poor decisions about the software for them was when they felt like they had to get something on the books, and they had to get it in the books in a hurry. I respect the drive to make the information easier, to use your data in support of community policing, but there are a lot of questions, and there's a lot of trust that I think you need from the community that I think a shortened timeframe of purchase just doesn't give you the opportunity to get, so I'd encourage you to take that into account. And some more transparency to address the questions that were asked by those who've come before me and those who will come after me is important, to make sure that we get the product that's actually going to achieve your goals, which I, you know, with only six days, I don't know that I know the goals. I saw them on the PowerPoint now, and it makes some sense, but it'd be good to know, because there are a lot of questions, and a lot of the questions with software involve, what happens if all the things we plan for are not the things that we do? What happens if we can't fund it, and the city council has to fund this after the grant? And what happens when somebody else decides they want to use this model in a different way? Or what happens when the vendor decides they want to change the way in which the data is processed? These are all things that, you know, we need to, as a community, take a look at, and more time for input and more time for decision and transparency, I think, would help allay a lot of those fears and get you a better product. That's all.
Thank you, sir. Rosa Linda Guian, Larry Hildes, and Karen Wheel.
So of course, you realize three minutes is not enough. But what I do want to say is that I don't want to take it for granted that this software's already going to be purchased, because I believe that it should not happen. I believe that as leaders of this city, the city council should give an opinion on this based on what the community is saying, whether or not you vote for it. You are elected leaders that are supposed to be governing the citizenry of this city. And for the Police Department to be allowed to make a decision that is going to impact mostly people of color is frankly appalling. The poor, the homeless, and the people of color of this community are already suffering from incredible racial profiling that has not been addressed. It is ongoing, it is systemic, and this software will only increase the systemic racism that's already present in Bellingham. Now you can say, "Rosa Linda, as always, you're overreacting and you don't trust us." Well, you know what? I don't. I don't. I've been in this city council chamber many times before to speak about issues with our community, and nothing has changed. Or should I say, I shouldn't say nothing, but very little has changed. We've continued organizing. I'm the Executive Director of Community to Community Development. We're into our 11th year of community organizing in the Latino community, the immigrant community, the farmworker community, the low-income Latino voter community. And it's very little changed. And this is, there is fear. There is fear, and this decision is frightening, and I'm not going to take it for granted that you will purchase it, because we are opposed to this. And if the city council doesn't take a position just because you are given a break to not have to decide on this, then shame on you, because we're the ones that are going to have to pay for whatever happens with this software. And I don't agree with it. It's not enough, you have not done enough yet to implement a community policing system that we feel safe with. If there was something done, then maybe we would consider this. But there's too much still that needs to happen. If you want to prevent crime, you need to go in the communities as human beings and learn how to talk with us, not look at this software. Frankly, I've seen science fiction movies where this software is being used, and the results of it are not good. So please, all of the leadership of the City of Bellingham, and no matter what agency, what position you have, should be looking at this. And I'm not going to go back to my community and say that Rosa Linda Guian did not speak out against this, because I am opposed to it, and I will speak to my community to continue to be opposed to it. Research and studies show, please, come on, there are research and studies that show that pesticides do not damage and kill farmworkers with cancer in the production of our food system, and we're still living and dying with that. So we don't trust the research that's being done by corporations on this, because we're living every day the results of a supposedly community policing system that is not working, and this will just make it worse.
Thank you. Larry Hildes, Karen Wheel, and Kim Harris.
Thank you, members of the council. Police Chief Cook, we had to scramble our schedule to be back here. We have to do a 300-mile round trip tomorrow to be in court in Olympia and back, because somebody tried to sneak this in. We didn't find out that this was scheduled until Friday afternoon. I do not call that responding to the community. I call that, let's see what we can get away with and then placate the community later. This is one of the reasons this is a very bad idea. And there is no example of any city using this software in the way that the chief and Deputy Chief Simons claim that they're going to use it. Every place that has this software has gotten their money's worth. They have used the capability of the software. They have tracked communities. They have tracked people. They have harassed people. They have falsely arrested people. Richmond, California is dumping it because aside from all the lawsuits, it doesn't even work. So we're going to model our policing on Joe Arpaio, NYPD's stop-and-frisk, and Chicago? I'm sorry, if this is what you think we want to compare Bellingham to, chief, please do us a favor and resign and get out of here, and let us get somebody who actually listens to the community. There is no example of software like this being used by a law enforcement community where it is not getting misused and abused. Our whole law practice is suing police departments, and we're on listservs from lawyers who do this all over the country. The number of officers who misuse NCIC, DOL, things that are already there that are set up to be used in a particular way is enormous. We're about to file a case for an officer who is using NCIC to enable him to sexually assault a victim. This is not appropriate. We don't need this. This is a community with a very low crime rate. We don't need to track the crime systematically. You go to the community, you ask people, "Where's the crime?" You talk to them. And there is no way you can track and predict crime without predicting the people who are committing it. I'm glad to see in a year we have progressed from 1984 to Minority Report. I am furious with this, that we are here again a year later with a new and improved version of get this off. By the way, it's a three-year contract, folks. DOJ is paying for the first year. Guess who pays for years two and three? We do! Ask questions. You have the ability to speak on this, and you need to be asking about the full terms of the contract, and if there's money involved, you need to be turning it down, and you need to tell the department no on this. We don't have to take this. This is our community. We don't need this. We don't want this.
Thanks, Larry. Kim Wheel, Kim Harris, and Edward Alexander.
Thank you. Karen Weil. First of all, really quickly, I'd like to say thank you for changing the name of Indian Street. We used to live over on High, and we very much appreciate that, and we'd love to see the county change the name of Oriental Street. But that, be it as it may, that's an aside. A lot of the stuff I had wanted to say has already been said. I just want to endorse what Janet said, particularly, can it be changed down the line, skewed data in, skewed data out? And as we all know, you can't grow up in a racist sexist society without absorbing some of that racism and some of that sexism. And police officers are human beings, just like the rest of us, and that's the way they look at things. I agree totally with the comment that Larry made about, I don't want to be funding the software after the DOJ grant runs out. And I agree, I'm sorry. I have offered before to meet with you, Chief Cook, on various issues. To me, the point of community policing is to meet with the community. It is one of the highest points of community policing. It is what distinguishes community policing from any other kind of policing. And to get six or seven days' notice that this was going to then be happening here at City Hall in a hearing here without any community meeting ahead of time, I'm extremely disappointed. And I've got to tell you, it hurts my heart. It really does. It is not Bellingham. This is not the way we do things here in Bellingham, especially after Entrada Beware last year, and how angry and everybody was so upset about that, to then propose another software without having a community meeting first to give people the chance to talk to you about it. I just, to me, that's not community policing, and I'm very disappointed. Thank you.
Thanks, Karen. Kim Harris, Edward Alexander, and Dean Tuckerman.
Good evening. My name is Kim Harris. I'm a resident of Bellingham, and I'm here on behalf of the Racial Justice Coalition, and I have a statement from our coalition. The Racial Justice Coalition is a group of concerned community members and organizations that are seeking to end systemic racism that manifests itself by racist institutional practices and policies. One such institutionally racist practice is racial profiling, which leads to the disproportionate stopping, frisking, detaining, arresting, and incarceration of people of color nationwide and right here in Watcom County. The RJC is concerned with the short notice that was given to the community to educate itself regarding the methods by which the Bear program determines which neighborhood should be the target of extra police actions. Historically and presently, data presented by law enforcement implies that people of color commit more crimes. The biased policies used by law enforcement, however, lead to more charges and arrests of people of color. If biased data is put into the program, the program will give police biased predictions and data. The RJC asks that the council, but it says that you guys aren't voting tonight, which I think is not appropriate. I think you guys should take a stance on this, and I think it's a cop-out. That's my personal opinion. We ask that you vote against this until the city, I'm sorry, that the city not pursue the grant until the city can obtain the metrics by which the program makes recommendations, and the community is given time to investigate the decision, making process, and resulting impacts on people of color. So I'm taking off my hat as an RJC person, because I have a minute and a half more, and I have worked in police administration for Los Angeles, and I will say that I am disappointed at the short timeframe that you had. I helped develop the community policing program for UCLA Police Department, and this is not how it's done. You don't make a short-term decision and then try to slip it under the radar, which is what it feels like, and not give people input. There's a way to give the community time. I would suggest having a meeting and inviting the community there and having a presentation that's more than a few slides, and explain how this works, so that people can get, so you can get buy-in. But this isn't the way to get community buy-in, so you'll hear this time and time tonight. And I'm a daughter of a retired law enforcement officer, so I am very supportive of police. I'm not anti-police. And so I do want to say that I think that time needs to be given to this, research needs to be looked at, possibly looking into some studies of what other police officers have done, and also investigate, why do we need this? Why is this necessary for Bellingham? We want this to be a progressive city. We don't want it to be like a big giant major metropolitan city. And if you want to know where crime is, talk to people. We've heard this again. Go into the community and talk to people. Don't sit behind your computer desk and look at programs spit out bad data that tells police what to do. Use police tactics.
Thank you. Edwards Alexander, Dean Tuckerman, and Robert Tobias.
I'm Edward Alexander. I live on 34th Street. I, too, am concerned with the very short notice on this. I am happy to hear that there is at least one study out there. I learned about this on Friday, and I read the materials that were presented with this agenda, and I didn't see any citation to the RAND study. I would say this, though, if, you know, I was reading the RAND study, it's, I understand they have a reputation for being biased toward the military-industrial complex and all sorts of other big corporate agendas. In any case, this is a hearing for the people to give input, but we haven't been given the time to investigate this. And I'm just going to echo what some other people have said about community policing. Six or seven days, that's not a conversation. I'm a little concerned about the tail wagging the dog here. This is a, I think Lexus is behind this company, Bear. Lexus was also involved in the Entrada Beware system, and in both cases, what they did, as I understand it, is they go to the federal government, excuse me, they go to Congress and talk to the appropriations committee, get a line item. They sent it out to all of these small towns around the country with a $21,000 grant to get our foot in the door so that, you know, we don't have the typical and normal request for proposal process. The Police Department, as I understand it, then will get this grant, they'll be on the software for a year, and, well, they decide it works fine, and we don't go through the normal process that we do as a city when we're about to spend some money, because this is going to cost us money after the grant runs out. And I talked to a local company who makes policing software that is used around the world, and the CEO of the company told me he would love to be consulted, or he'd love to see a request for a proposal. And I said something a moment ago about the tail wagging the dog here, and what I meant by that is, these big companies that lobby Congress and, you know, get this backdoor in, way in here, they have an agenda. I'm not going to speak as to what it is, but it's not necessarily ours. I think we have to have our own agenda, we have to take time and decide what our goals are and what our needs are, and then make a request for a proposal, and let companies and the community give their input as to how do we accomplish that? What are our goals, and how do we accomplish that? So if these big companies are going through Congress, that is the tail wagging the dog. That's not us making our own destiny here. I'm also very concerned about racial profiling, and again, bad data in is going to give bad data out.
Thank you. Dean Tuckerman, Robert Tobias, and the last name is Alan Crum. If anybody else wants to speak, line up against the wall over there.
We're back here again. It's amazing. We were here last year, and we talked about, we talked about the profiling last year. This one, we don't know very much about. I looked at Bear, and I still don't know which part of the Bear program that you are even giving, we are even buying. It's very unclear, and we're buying it. We're not getting it for free from the federal government. We're buying it. A contract is being signed, and we're buying it, and therefore, the council should have some kind of oversight, and some, not even oversight, should have, and it should sign a contract. This is an important thing. The other thing is, this Bear, which is allegedly a small company, was just bought by Lexus Nexus. Lexus Nexus is a big database company. Are they going to take our information? This is a question. It's not, I don't have an answer. Are they going to take our information and put it in their database? That is a real question that we need to know before we approve this. And there are many other questions that we need to know before we approve this. We, the vagueness of this acquisition is amazing. It is, I mean, last year, the Entrada Beware was very easy to stop because it wasn't vague. It was dangerous. This year, we don't know whether this is dangerous or not. People are saying it might be, and people are saying it might not be, but we don't know, because we don't, because you didn't give us a report. You didn't, we, last year, when, after this event, we talked to one of the assistants, and he said he would contact us if anything like this occurred. He did not. He did not. He didn't contact us, and that was bad. And, let's see, I have some, one of, two other points, that this is a, the handwriting is hard, trying to remember what they were. The idea that this program is going to solve crime is ridiculous. A program, I mean, people either know where it is, or crime is random, and most of the crime in Bellingham is random. Most of the violent crime is random domestic violence.
Thank you, Dean.
How is this program going to deal with that?
Thank you, Dean. Robert Tobias and Alan Crum, and anybody else that wishes to speak.
I'd like to say thank you to the council, to Chief Cook, and for the officers and community for coming out here today. There's been a lot of talk tonight about community policing, and I just would like to ask where the police was when the community showed up in full force yesterday. Many people here, myself included, came out in a vigil marking the one-year anniversary of the death of Mike Brown in Ferguson, Missouri, and I did not see one police officer the entire time I was there. Well, in that specific case, yes, in that specific case, it was good. But what I'm asking here is, why are we discussing the purchase of predictive policing software? Why are we looking at profiling what might happen instead of what is happening in this community? Why are we seeing these things coming in with very short notice? Why are we having a hearing in which there is no vote, in which your concerns and our concerns are allowed to be voiced but not necessarily impact the decision that is supposedly already been made? Yeah, I believe that the cost of our liberty cannot be safety. We must not profile for the sake of our protection. If you want to serve the community, then first you have to listen to them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alan Crum.
Good evening. Thank you for having me and letting me talk. I'll let you know, this is my first time at a community council meeting, or city council meeting. I'm new here to Bellingham. I just moved here in May, and I moved up from Seattle, and I will tell you, I have retired, and I have 50 years' experience in developing software systems and all sorts of stuff. And I don't understand the whole process of what happened here with the timing. I can, however, appreciate that sometimes the best intentions get screwed up, and there isn't enough time for advance notice and things. I don't believe that a police department here in Bellingham, from what I've seen so far, believes in profiling per se. What they're talking about, from what I've seen from the slide, which is not a lot of information, I agree there should be more, is just consider it like a spreadsheet that says, this is what's happened, this is where it was, and this is when it was. It's not getting down into the nitty-gritty of the actual person. It's not doing that kind of analysis. And that is not a bad thing, because the amount of time that a police department has to react to a pattern of crime is critical. The shorter the amount of time that they, if they can shorten that amount of time that says, oh, this is a pattern, and the software can recognize it as a pattern, that helps them. That's just what I'm seeing so far in this short period of time, because I just found out about this too. But it's been very interesting, it's been very enlightening. I agree with all that you're saying, that not, I'm not for profiling, don't believe in it. Frankly, I think that the word, what race are you, should be taken off of every single document in the United States. But this is a tool to help their analysts say, this is where we need to focus. Or there is a pattern like the rooftop crimes, very, very good example. There are a lot of crimes like that, that people that are doing these things do it systematically. And if you can discover what that systematic basis is early, you can get to it earlier. You can be in the general area at the right time. So I'm all in favor of it, as long as it's only used in the manner that he has prescribed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Welcome to Bellingham. Joy Gilfelin.
I'm Joy Gilfelin from Bellingham, Washington, and I have a couple of concerns about this issue. One of them is, it disturbs me that, again, a program for profiling of any kind comes to us as a done deal, and the public is not part of that process, except after the fact. I think that's actually a Bureau of Justice problem. I think it's also a national problem with people who are selling surveillance software and selling data mining and selling all kinds of other things. So that part of the due process, I think, is something that we as a community need to start looking at, both in our cities and in our county. So that said, predictive policing on some levels makes sense. When I was a student officer up at Western, I was there, you know, it's interesting what you forget about your past, but in the '70s, I was working at campus police when we went from being a campus security agency to being a police department. And it was interesting for me to observe the difference in the attitudes of the very police officers, the very same people who were on one side of the field when we were campus security, not looking for crime, we were there to protect the students, to suddenly having a gun and being responsible for finding crime. And the number of things that ended up happening as a behavior were that we started to look for people who could be doing crime. We weren't looking for car prowls to help reduce the crime. We were looking for what was the crime, so that we could do a better job as police officers. It was very interesting to observe that psychological shift, and so when you start creating these kinds of predictive policing and then put it on the streets, and then people start looking for, you know, where's the crime in my neighborhood, and then before long, you up the ante on crime, and we end up creating the very situations that we don't want to see. So I'm just raising that as a question. One of the other things I've learned that, from high-performance coaching in quantum physics, is the what you see, you get more of. So as we look, you know, what would be the possibility, for example, if you were to use this, and I know this is really far out, but what if you were to say, how many places are we seeing reconciliation of conflict, and start tracking that on that data mining software? So you can start to see where communities are becoming safer as opposed to where they're becoming more violent. So it's just, that's a strange, but very different way of looking at it, but I think in the next four, five years, 10 years, we truly need to look at, how do we downsize and downscale and de-escalate fear and violence in our communities? How do we turn it backwards? So I'm not in favor of moving this forward, simply because I don't, I do have some concerns about racial profiling. I do understand some of your ideas and some of the needs you have to reduce the amount of time that it takes to track data. Data's tough. I'm not in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Ah, Richard.
My name is Dick Conneboy. I live on South 46th Street here in Bellingham. This is a tough one. I wrestled with this. You know I spoke out against Entrada, and I had conversations with the police chief about it, and Dave Dahl, the other deputy, and this one, I also talked to the police chief about it. We exchanged some emails on it. I thought that there were some problems with it, but the way it's described to me, it's not Entrada, and I would be willing to accept this if it's used exactly the way it's described. We're plotting data, you know, I did this as an intelligence analyst for years, counterterrorism, plotting data. Predicting stuff is, is, it might be a more problematic issue. I don't know about driving a car by looking in the rearview mirror, but if there are some algorithms, I don't understand statistics or regression analysis and all that, perhaps it might assist. I also think there were some really valid things brought up this evening. However, I would not paint our police department with a broad brush, certainly not Maricopa County, and we're not Chicago, and we're not Los Angeles or New York. You know, I spent six years as a senior volunteer with the police department here. I've spent a lot of times in the back halls, talking with the police officers. You know, they let their guard down, we chat and whatnot. Been over at the 911 center, listening to dispatchers and the calls coming in, and I never detected the least amount of disdain or anything else for the public. And I think it's not the information you've got, it's how you use it. And I've seen a police department that's well-trained, and one that I'm glad that we have here. Now, can it be better? Absolutely. Chief Cook is working on that ever since he came in here, but I think it needs, we need a real conversation here, and maybe this will open up something where we can have other venues where we can start talking about this further, beyond the emotion of this current situation. I'd certainly like to see that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dick. Anybody else wishing to speak? Come forward. Give us your name.
Okay. Hello, friends. My name's Annika Walters. I'll put my sign down, but it says white silence equals violence, and I'll just extend that to violence, silence in general equals violence, so. I just found out about this today, so excuse the jumbled thoughts, but I'm 23 years old. I've lived in Bellingham for five years now. I recently am about to graduate from Western Washington University, and as a retired president of the student body there, I just want to mention that my voice tonight is not representative of the student body anymore, but I do know for a fact that there are a lot of who would agree with me, and aside from the very valid concerns that we've heard already tonight, and even beside the very short notice that we've had, I think it's very sneaky to give your very generous public hearing about, in this time of year, when there are no students in town, and when most, a lot of folks are on vacation as well. So I'd appreciate more transparency and more notice on this, and even more input before it's already decided. Kim brought up a really good point, is why is this needed? We really don't want to see Bellingham become a major metropolitan city like the ones that we've cited earlier, such as Chicago and New York. And I really didn't hear any reasons that this is needed, other than that it takes so long to track the hours, and I agree that, I think people of Bellingham would rather pay for another person to help log those hours by hand over this $21,000 grant to have this very invasive data program. I personally would rather pay for another employee to help whoever that is, to do that by hand, so. Aside from that, despite my T-shirt tonight, I haven't decided whether or not I'm wholly anti-police. I am anti-history of the police, as we have seen the police be established in this country to track down stolen property or, you know, runaway slaves, as we have seen it. The police have evolved from such a white supremacist capitalist power structure, and it's the same structure that fuels these big data programs that we're looking into buying today. You know, we could say that it was of the time, you know, it was of, it's the time of the mentality, but I know that Bellingham Police also purchased a German, started using German Shepherds in 1968, which was also of the time, and I don't believe that we should use that same rationale to be purchasing new digitized data that would not only just deteriorate the effectiveness of the police, but also take away the very community in community and policing. Aside from that, I took a tour of the Bellingham Police Station recently, which you led, Chief Cook, and I'd be happy to share the other concerns I have, again, around the police history, and just, we have old leg restraints and, like, old weapons. I really, I really encourage folks to look at the Bellingham Police Department and go there physically, at the physical space, to see the history that it's built on. Thank you.
Next.
Good evening. My name is Lindsay McDonald. I'm a teacher in the Bellingham School District, and I've lived in Bellingham since '86. To begin with, I want to thank the Chief Cook and Deputy Chief Simon for this opportunity to speak tonight, and also to the council. If we take this out and we aggregate it 10 years forward, we're looking at a cost of about $210,000, of which $190,000 ultimately would be paid for by the city, since only the first year is paid for by the grant. Now, regarding, in reading I've done related to the new jail, I read statements, people here have referenced that many of our violent crime incidents in Bellingham are incidents of domestic violence, but I've read that in terms of burglary and property crime and car prowls, et cetera, the majority of crime is, such as burglary, is due to drug dependency, specifically methamphetamine and heroin. With the heroin problem often evolving after people have been prescribed and become addicted to synthetic opioids, such as oxycodone, for pain relief, and then it gets too expensive, and they go to the street to buy heroin, which is cheaper. This is a nationwide problem, and methamphetamine addiction and heroin addiction, our county has not escaped this problem. So if the $190,000 the city is committing to as a continuing product subscription, could this be better used to increase access to treatment for addicted individuals and oversight in their recovery through intensive case management approaches? At the Bellingham Human Rights Film Festival, I saw a very impressive short about intensive case management in our community, which hopefully you're familiar with, where those few individuals who incur the greatest public cost through emergency room visits and jail visits are given intensive case management to manage their mental issues and their substance issues, and greatly reduce their interface with the emergency room and the police department. In sum, with limited resources and the future financial obligation this program incurs by the city, I would question if there is a way to dedicate our resources to the healing of our community members, who happen to be husbands, fathers, uncles, sons, daughters, mothers, cousins, who are struggling with dependency on addictive substances, instead of tracking the crime, their dependency causes as they seek to withdraw, to avoid withdrawal. Because we know that once you're hooked, you have to get your daily fix, simply to not go into withdrawal. It's not to get high, it's just not to get very, very sick. And we don't have enough resources in our community to treat this as a social problem and a medical problem, rather than a criminal problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Junga Subedar, a community member here, and first of all, I'd like to thank you all for the opportunity to speak tonight. Now I understand, after Chief Cook's presentation a little bit, why it's only $21,000 approximately. We had, with the very little notice that we had, consulted a local expert that does software like this internationally, and he thought it was a very low number, and he was wondering, like, how much data are you actually getting that would be effective? And basically, I think Chief Cook, you said that it would predict just crime, not offenders or anything else. Well, he said, if it's doing that, it's very easy to have an Excel program that most anyone could input data into and find this information, making it efficient. Because we do understand that it's labor-intensive, and we don't want to create more work, we want to make it efficient for you too, but are we doing that? And are we doing that in the best way? I think everyone that opposes this software, we oppose it because we want community policing. We're serious about that. We want public safety, and we want to live in a community where everyone feels safe. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else before we close the public hearing? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Chief Flo, you want to respond? Or do you want to take council questions first? It's up to you.
Yes, I would like to take some questions.
Okay.
I'll leave some of the questions to the council.
Okay.
From the university, from the community, but I guess, Michael, if you don't mind, or iterating the questions she had earlier, if you have a chance. Frankly, if you don't mind, or iterating the questions she had earlier.
We can't really hear Chief Cook.
Get up to the microphone. Okay. Or turn it on.
Well, I asked three questions. One was how good are the data? How will they be corrected, analyzed, audited for accuracy?
Well, the data comes from our RMS or is, it's an inside program that was built by members of the department some years ago. And quite frankly, it's a very good program. It competes with anything that's currently out there that costs millions of dollars. The information is what's contained in our police reports. Those reports are what we receive from the community in regards to the crimes that they report to us. I think if there's any area of weakness around that information, it's going to be that we know for a fact that not all crimes do get reported to us. However, I believe as far as the reporting information goes and as far as the type of crime, place, and time, the data is going to be as accurate as any other police report or any other source of information that you're going to draw that information out of. Because as I mentioned, it's not about personal information, it's not about victim information. This is not a software to use to predict who are likely victims. I think you asked a question also about, what is it based on an algorithm? And it is, and that's why we are seeking this software contract is because it gives us access to that algorithm. The algorithm is proprietary, much like any other algorithm that you would use in this circumstance. Although I might feel like it's necessary to point out, this algorithm is based on research and studies that have been done utilizing algorithms that predict aftershocks from earthquakes, medical cancer forecasting on certain types of cancer. This is not something that's merely come out of the, out of the air for police. This is the use of algorithms that have been proven in other areas. So I believe it lends a level of credibility to what we're trying to do when we forecast where we need to place resources. Are we going to track minor drug offenses? No. Are we going to use this for incidences of civil disobedience? No. This is strictly going to be focused on our primary objective around property crimes and violent crimes when we feel the necessity. Because this community, as you know, has a very low violent crime rate. However, we are, like many cities in the state of Washington, experiencing an extremely high property crime rate. Residential burglaries, commercial burglaries, thefts of cars, car prowls, thefts of other types of property. And quite frankly, based on my own experience, when you're dealing with limited resources and limited officer time, you have to deploy those resources in a way to ensure that you are doing the most you can to either prevent crimes or to apprehend those, apprehend those in the act. You have to be in that area. Some would equate this with not being an aspect of community policing. I disagree. Part of the program and part of our intention is to give this information to our officers so as they go out and interact with members of the community, that they're able to pass along this information. Because quite frankly, some people don't know what's going on in their neighborhood. That's why we've asked for this public version. That's why we have rejected other vendors' software programming because it doesn't provide that information where it's readily available to the community to look at. Quite frankly, predictive policing or forecasting software of police departments puts us in a very precarious position. Because it does provide the information to the community about where crime is occurring and to what extent and the frequency. And if we're not doing a very good job, it's going to show. If we were trying to conceal how we were doing things or what our effectiveness was, I wouldn't be asking for anything like this. But on the contrary, I feel like I have an obligation to let the community know what's happening in their neighborhood and in a way to hold us accountable for doing something about it. That is why I've not considered and will not consider software programs that look at individuals.
Dan.
Thank you, Chief Cook. I'm wondering how the Bellingham Police Department can guarantee that this software will not unfairly or disproportionately target communities of color or neighborhoods where the majority of people live in poverty?
That's a difficult question because, quite frankly, as was mentioned by some of the community members, those communities are victimized by crime. So in order to look at that information and base a forecast on where we're likely to see that crime occur in that community, is going to require us to be in that community and to be focused on where those crimes can occur. I see it as a more concerned way of deploying officers in a community of color or low socio-economic conditions. But the reality for us as police officers and as a police department is we have to be and go to where the crimes are occurring. And it's not, as was mentioned earlier, a look back in the rearview mirror. Because that's the way we've been doing things. I'm surprised that we have not taken advantage of this type of programming previous, knowing this department's reputation. And the only assurance I can give to this community that it will not be used or changed is because this department's history is that we don't police that way. We don't ignore people's constitutional and civil rights. We are very much sensitive to those issues.
Thank you. Anybody else? Jack?
Thank you, Chief. I guess my questions had more to do with just the specifics of this contract. The grant is for two years, the contract with Bear is for three, is that true?
It's my understanding that we will sign a contract for three. The cost quotes that have been mentioned are not accurate. The initial cost is $21,000, but the annual cost to us subsequent to that is about $3,000 a year.
Okay. Where did the $5,600 figure that's in the, looked like in the grant?
I think that's the combined for years two and three.
Okay. So you're saying that the first...
It's not $21,000 a year.
I understand that. I knew that that was the wrong number that was kind of bandied about.
And, you know, the question was asked, why can't the money be used towards trying to deal with individuals who are suffering from addictions that are involved in this kind of activity? And frankly, I think you know what my position is on that issue. I'm very much in support of those things. Part of my concern around the jail agreement is, has to do with those very issues. So for me, community policing isn't just about a single program or a single effort and frankly, our officers get out in the community every evening and meet with neighborhoods' groups and individuals whenever they're asked. And sometimes when they're not asked, we show up at meetings merely to be there. But it's a combination of things. It is an aggregate of a variety of different efforts. It isn't one singular thing. And so what you're seeing tonight is something we feel is necessary to help ensure that we're trying to prevent crime in our community, but at the same time, it doesn't represent all the efforts that we're making.
Terry.
Oh, okay. Anybody else? Go ahead. I guess, you know, these kind of, these are always hard situations because I hear the comments from people about here and I understand the real concerns that many of the people that have spoken have. And it doesn't always mesh with like this kind of program. But the concerns people have about the mistrust that we have within policing from around the country and around racial incidences that have happened in our history here and in so many other places, you know, are right there on the surface. And as a nation, as a city, we haven't really addressed those issues very well. So when anything comes up that looks like it's coming up as profiling, it does bring out concerned citizens. And I fully understand it. As a parent of children of color and have seen that kind of thing happen to them in different stops, the other kinds of stuff, I fully understand that and understand that concern. And we have seen that kind of thing and we see the incidences around the country. But I do really think, and I know, our police force, we've got a good police force. And no, Chief Cook, don't leave. I know your background and I respect you and Flo and the work that you're doing in terms of trying to reach out to the community. But I do think some of the comments we're hearing is, tells us about the work that we as a council and the police force and others need to do in terms of reaching out to our community, in terms of communication, in terms of just reaching out and listening to the concerns that are out there. Because I think sometimes we think we are, but evidently there are things that we're not listening closely enough to, you know, and that's basically my comments. I'm not commenting on this because I understand parts of this, how this can, this specific kinds of software can work. I've seen the patterns in our neighborhood, in the Seehome neighborhood, I've seen the patterns different times on South Hill and things where the police end up picking up because of spot, finally spotting the patterns where they're hitting and then getting them. But it sometimes takes 23, 24 break-ins before that pattern is spotted. And so I understand how this kind of software could, can work if it's just applied to the crime and not to directing towards people.
Thank you.
I just want to say that I think we have an extraordinary police department and we are very lucky in this city. And I also know that you've done an extraordinary job in community policing, Chief Cook, and we are very proud of that. I was very opposed to the Entrada software for lots of reasons. It's where it gathered its data from, especially social media, not exactly the most accurate. However, I feel as though the statements I'm hearing tonight, I'm a little confused by because I completely understand the public sentiment for us not to do profiling, to not harass people under low income and to be very careful of our community. But what I think that I understand, which I'm wanting clarification on, is it doesn't feel as though the software that we're looking at at this time does any of those things. And there was also comments around where the data goes. This is our data, correct? We are not sharing it with the software company. No one else has access to it. So it is our private data that we are using. And we, I think that it sounds like there's confusion around what we're going to use the data for. And your statement to us very publicly, and we are your witnesses, that the software is only going to be used for, to find heat maps, to solve problems. One of our challenges here in our city is that we don't have enough budget to have enough police officers. And we have to do things on a very small budget. I would love to add more police officers for us to be able to do more work in our community and positive work. I think the work that we do here is really great. I also know that we're trying to find funding for a lot of our diversion programs and not put people in jail. So if this software can help us be more efficient and not profile any of our citizens, then I support that. But I want to make sure that I am understanding correctly that this is not about people. This is only about highlighting crime.
Correct. Anybody else? I just want to alleviate the point that this council, this mayor, this police department does not sneak anything by. Our world is six days' notice for the council. We start putting the packet together on Wednesday afternoon. Thursday afternoon, we have it and we've got to be prepared to come here on Monday night and make a decision. This notice was sent out on July 31st. I made sure it was sent out early. Everybody worked on this. This was not trying to sneak anything by folks. This is Bellingham, we don't work that way at all. And these police officers and the police chief, you know, I grew up here. I know what it was like when I was little. I know what it's like now. And these police officers do their job and they do it very well. So we heard the public, this is the way it's set up. I can assure you that nobody's trying to sneak anything by because we can't, you can't sneak it by anybody. And that's not what we're trying to do. So seeing none, we will go on. Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
And Flo. And we will now go to our second public hearing. If Mr. Nabafeld is ready. This is a public hearing on the adoption of an emergency ordinance establishing interim zoning for the cultivation of medical marijuana, personal use, and a moratorium on collective gardens and cooperatives.
Good afternoon, or good evening, sorry.
Better not be afternoon.
Kurt Nabafeld, Planning Community Development Department. Tonight, council is conducting a public hearing on emergency ordinance, on interim rules regarding personal cultivation of medical marijuana, and also a moratorium on any new collective gardens or cooperatives established. On June 15th, 2015 of this year, the council did adopt the interim rules and according to state law, we must conduct a public hearing on those rules within 60 nights, or 60 days. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to take testimony regarding the interim rules and the moratorium. The, tonight's public hearing is not dealing with recreational marijuana, which we dealt with earlier this afternoon. These rules were adopted in response to recent action by the state legislature in an attempt to try and clarify regulations for marijuana. Rulemaking for these new state laws is currently underway and should be completed by January of 2016. At the end of the hearing, the council may rescind, modify, or leave the existing rules, emergency ordinance in place. Staff recommends that you do that, you reaffirm that, and maintain the ordinance. With that, I can turn it back to council president.
Okay, thank you, sir. Is there anybody here wishing to speak for or against this proposal? Michael, has anybody signed up out there? Could you check?
Wasn't earlier.
Wasn't earlier, okay. Going once, going twice, gone. Close the public hearing and return it to council. We need a motion, folks?
Actually, yeah, you've already passed this, so no action tonight is affirmative vote, essentially.
You know, after a year and a half, I should know this stuff by now. Okay. Nothing? Thank you, Kurt.
Thank you.
We will now, we will now go to our standing committees and go to Public Work, Public Safety chaired by Terry Bornham. Do you want a break or you want to keep going?
Could we take just a couple minutes break?
I think we better take a break.
I could use, yeah.
We'll take a break. We'll take a break.
Whoa. Oh, she just broke her.
Whoa. Oh, she just broke her. Jesus. Okay.
And I agree with these kind of decisions. They shouldn't have covered meetings before. But that's, but as I said, that's not my, I don't tell, I don't tell. I agree, but that's not my decision. And they say, oh, no, we have separation. It's the way it is. Yeah. But you know, that's, you know, honestly. I told them, they know what they're saying. Most of them, yeah, right. Most of them are well-meaning and everything else, and you have some people like you, you know. But then, yeah. We are not, we're just, we're not, we're not, we're not actually, we're not. Yeah. It's just, we, yeah. Yeah. It's not a memory tape. Everybody else will, it's too late. I agree with that. I really just, I really don't see what's going on. I think, yeah, I think, yeah. I think, yeah. I think, yeah. I agree with that. I agree, but that's not my decision. And they say, oh, no, we have separation. It's the way it is. Yeah. But you know, that's, you know, honestly. I told them, they know what they're saying. Most of them, yeah, right. Most of them are well-meaning and everything else, and you have some people like you, you know. But then, yeah. We are not, we're just, we're not, 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 we're[681.63]
Within, within the county. A copy of it is not included in your packet. I hope everyone went and read all five hundred and some pages online. You know, I, I know you got it all down. But, uh, this was, uh, to vote, to approve the update and I so move.
Motion been made and seconded, any discussion? All who are in favor will say aye. Aye. All who oppose, motion carries seven zero.
Okay, the next one is an interlocal agreement with Watcombe County for stormwater maintenance service in Lake Watcombe watershed area and the city's urban growth area, the UGAs. This interlocal agreement is for the pub, city's public works department to provide stormwater maintenance service to Watcombe County for the county's portion of the Lake Watcombe watershed and the city's UGAs. This interlocal will assist Watcombe County in meeting the near-term needs, uh, for the new NPDES permit, permit requirements. This, the agreement will provide a means of transferring operational knowledge and technology and, uh, interoperability of equipment and personnel, uh, to the county. Additionally, this interlocal agreement will provide multi-agency consistency in maintenance, protocol, and data collect, data collection. One of the things that was brought up by the, the city doing this, it will actually increase, um, our abilities to, to work within our, our own projects. It'll, uh, yeah. And so, uh, committee recommended approval and I so move.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, any discussion? All who are in favor will say aye. Aye. All who oppose, motion carries seven zero.
The last item was, uh, an update on the commercial street parking garage improvement project. Uh, staff provided council, uh, the committee with an update on parking garage improvement project as well as, uh, the parking story being conducted by the downtown, uh, Bellingham partnership and it was for information only.
Okay.
End of committee.
Thank you, Terry. We'll now go to the planning committee. Jack Weiss is the chair.
Thank you, Gene. This morning, uh, we had one item. It was the consideration of a new twenty-year population and employment growth forecast and the potential changes to Bellingham's urban growth boundary. Uh, we had a public hearing two weeks ago on this issue and had substantial public comment concerning population growth. And we've also received, uh, approximately ninety-nine letters, uh, on this topic. Uh, there, the staff has put together a comment tracker to deal with the, with the, uh, all of this information that has been brought in by the public. Uh, we received a report by staff about the comments, the public comments, and what the staff's responses were to those, those particular general categories of, of comments. We, uh, also had, um, a discussion about, uh, responses to questions that were presented by council, primarily me, but...
What a surprise.
What a surprise.
They were good comments.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, and we, we, and we talked quite a bit about data and, and just numbers in, in particular. Uh, after, after a lot of this, uh, discussion which lasted the entire, uh, ninety-minute work session that we had, we, uh, we agreed to have another work session on August thirty-first. We had a motion. The motion, as you might have heard earlier, uh, from Pat McKee, was that, uh, the motion was to modify the planning commission's recommendation, uh, to have a, a medium growth projection for population and a high projection for employment. Uh, that, uh, that motion was to, uh, provide direction to staff to come back to the committee with a resolution that would, that would specify those, uh, those metrics and then we would then develop a final recommendation to the city council, uh, for, for action on the evening of August thirty-first after we've had a chance to not only, uh, look at the resolution but also talk about other, other issues associated with it. Uh, what's, what this means in numbers, I'm gonna throw out a few numbers here, but just bear with me. So our current, our current, uh, projection that the city council had approved last year and also what the planning commission was, uh, was recommending, had to deal with approximately thirty-six thousand in population, you know, increase over the next twenty years. Uh, we have a capacity of thirty-two thousand nine hundred in existing, uh, capacity within the city limits and also in our existing urban growth areas, our UGAs. We are, uh, with the medium projection, it will be, uh, a, a population growth forecast of twenty-eight thousand three hundred and ninety-eight. So it's below what we currently, uh, can even go and supply. So, uh, in essence, we would not be advocating for any UGA expansion under this particular, uh, uh, motion and resolution. On the employment side, a similar type of thing, but, um, we will continue to, to promote a, uh, a job production rate of twenty-two thousand six hundred and forty-one jobs. That's the high projection. We currently have the capacity of approximately twenty-four thousand jobs, so we're easily me, meeting that anyway. So we will, uh, we'll advocate for a high, um, a high number for that. So, um, this is for information only. It is, uh, is something that we'll be talking about. Uh, what I found out this morning, um, which was different than the, uh, the title of the agenda bill is that the urban growth boundary changes actually had to do with the two proposed, uh, UGA inclusions into, into the city of Kitec and South East Street Road, not to look at our existing UGAs and what, what, um, changes might occur to those particular boundaries. That, I, I was told today was that that discussion will be happening at a subsequent, uh, meeting and, uh, as we get closer and closer through the comp plan update process. So with that, um, unless there's any questions, that's the end of committee.
Thanks, Chair.
Just one, one comment on that. Uh, with us going, uh, recommending the, the mid-range, uh, population projections, as Jack had said, this, our current city boundaries will accommodate those as well as we'd asked the question about it, the, the current boundaries, uh, of the city will accommodate that as well as protect the single-family zoning within single-family neighborhoods. So that wouldn't, we wouldn't have to put additional pressure on that for any kind of, uh, zoning changes or the pressure. So with the, uh, with that as well as not having to go into the, uh, urban growth, uh, areas, bring other areas into the city.
Okay, thank you, Terry. We will now go to finance and personnel, which was chaired by Michael Liliquis, subbing for Pinky Vargas.
The finance and personnel committee considered one item this afternoon. Uh, it was a grant award from the twenty-fourteen FEMA assistance to firefighters. The fire department has been awarded a FEMA assistance to firefighters grant to purchase a non-transport vehicle for the community paramedic program. Non-transport just means it doesn't take gurneys and stretchers, but people fit in it obviously. Uh, the federal award is authorized at fifty-one thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars. It requires a ten percent local match. That's a local commitment of five thousand one hundred and eighty-eight dollars. This is a budget ordinance to authorize the receipt of that grant as well as the expenditure of the local ten percent match. This afternoon, the committee unanimously recommended to pass the ordinance and I so move.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, any discussion? All who are in favor will say aye. Aye. All who oppose, motion carries seven zero.
End of committee, Gene.
Thank you, Michael. We now go to Wat, Lake Watcombe Reservoir Natural Resources. Dan Hamels is the chair.
Thank you, Gene. Uh, the committee heard one item this afternoon. The city of Bellingham has been awarded a two-hundred-thousand-dollar grant from the Rose Foundation for the construction of the Little Squalicum Creek Estuary Restoration Project. Funding was contingent upon securing matching funds in the amount of four-hundred-thousand dollars, which the city has secured from the Department of Ecology in the amount of two-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars and the Port of Bellingham in the amount of one-hundred-thousand dollars. The city will contribute the remaining ninety-thousand dollars. This, the public works department is requesting council to approve, um, or to, approval to accept the Rose Foundation grant. The committee, um, voted unanimously to, um, to accept it and I so move.
Second. Uh, you, Michael or Jack? Let's give it to Jack. Wait. Okay, motion been made and seconded, any discussion? All who are in favor will say aye. Aye. All who oppose, motion carries seven zero. Now we go to parks and recreation and it was recreation this afternoon, that's for sure. Roxanne Murphy is the chair.
Well, I am happy that we had one of the, one of the only fun presentations from today. So it was a parks operations update. And so the operations division within the parks department, they help maintain everything from our trails to our different park areas, the buildings, and they also help out at the cemetery and our golf course. And so we got some really fun statistics and I'm just gonna share a few about the work and everything that they do to maintain our parks and recreation areas. So this includes sixty-eight miles of trails in our fair city and this includes also annually three thousand miles of mowing, two-point-seven-two miles of maintaining planning beds, eight-hundred-and-eighty miles of toilet paper that's transferred in and out of our parks, and five-point-four miles of trash that is hauled out annually. So this was for information only, but our committee definitely unanimously, unanimously supported the work of our maintenance department and I hope you guys will support everything that they do to make our parks magical.
You left out the three thousand miles of toilet paper for some reason.
Oh, she got that.
Did you say that?
Yes, she did.
Eight-hundred-and-eighty miles.
Eight-hundred-and-eighty miles. Excuse me. Okay, committee, the whole had a few items. The first item was, um, adding a conflict of interest clause to the city council rules of procedure was a resolution adding a, a code of conduct, conflict of interest section to the Bellingham City Council rules and procedures. It has to do with, um, the code of ta, let me just read the bottom part of it. It, it's pretty self-explanatory, but the code of conduct applies to all elected officials engaged in selection, award, or administration of contracts related to the agencies and projects listed in the HUD Annual Action Program. No elected official of the city of Bellingham shall participate in the selection, award, or administration of such a contract if a conflict of interest, real or apparent, would be involved. Further, no elected official shall solicit or accept gratuities, favors, or anything of monetary value from contractors or applicants related to the selection, award, or administration of such contracts. Uh, this afternoon, the committee recommended approval and I so move.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, any discussion? All who are in favor will say aye. Aye. All who oppose, motion carries seven zero. The next item was extension renewal of emergency ordinance creating interim zoning for establishment of facilities producing, processing, and retailing recreational marijuana. Committee recommends approval and I so move.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, any discussion? All who are in favor will say aye. Aye. All who oppose, motion carries seven zero. The next item was a report on the status and next steps of the rental registration and safety inspection program. This afternoon, we heard from Rex, Rick Sepler. I was really surprised. I remember we got a report last time we were here and we only had four or five hundred registered. Now we're up to, no, was it, was it?
We're five thousand.
Was that what it was last time?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, anyway, we're over fourteen thousand five hundred now. We're only what, three hundred some away from the full boat there? That, that's really great and it was wonderful news and, uh, that's going in, going in the right direction. We'll hear more about that and the inspection program in a few weeks. The next was a second quarter financial report given by, uh, Brian Henshaw. He talked a little about a lot of the city contracts. We have, is it seven or nine? Seven contracts that are unsigned at this moment. That is a little bit of a red alarm, but other than that, the, um, retail sales is doing good, the sales tax is doing good, and, uh, we're plodding right along. Uh, we had, uh, we did our minutes and under older new business, we brought up the jail discussion. So I will bring that back to the council.
Gene?
Yes, sir.
I think we did the committee meeting minutes but not these.
Oh.
I'm not certain, but I, I think that's what happened.
Yeah, we did the committee meeting minutes. We'll do, we'll, we'll slip the other minutes in before we do, uh, after older new business, we'll do those. Thanks, Michael. So I'll bring back what we talked about this afternoon, which was the, uh, the, uh, the ordinance on the tax force. We'll start with that and, uh, is there any action on the council on this item? Do you wanna say anything bef, no?
No, I, I do wanna say something.
Well, go ahead. Nobody else is saying anything.
Um, the, the reason that I brought this back, as I realized that, um, it wasn't a request of the council, was just to close the loop on what the county council did. And as it concerns the, the, uh, this resolution, I think that they adopted most of the changes that we wanted and, but it's still a resolution and it's non-binding. Um, I did have a, a phone call with the county executive this afternoon and, um, and basically requested a couple other things that I thought might be helpful, like could there be a separate agreement with Bellingham as long as we were still paying our fair share? That might be different than the other small cities just because Bellingham has a lot more exposure than the, the other small cities do. And, um, that probably wasn't acceptable. And so, um, where I see this, uh, and I wish we weren't here because I believe we need a new jail, is the fact that, um, the county, the, the resources, the increased resources that are gonna be going to the county are gonna be used to help the county with their financial situation and to, um, help them pay their fair share of the jail cost. Um, we're gonna get some money back, uh, a credit back if in fact this passes, but it is not gonna be enough to cover our bed costs, nor is it going to be, um, any additional money that, um, we, out of the one-tenth of a percent that is for operations, that we can guarantee that's gonna go to some of the alternatives that we've all been talking about. And so, um, I just wanted to kinda bring it back to where it is right now. Um, there, there will be, um, financial consequences for us, um, come January. Hopefully, they won't be implemented right away, but we're gonna have to, to, um, have some serious discussions about what happens if we don't sign the jail agreement and our misdemeanments, um, at some point in time, uh, there's no room for them in the end and we have to decide what, what we are going to do, um, with that. I think originally the county executive indicated that they were gonna go through and do line-by-line charges so that our bed rates would be different than, um, anybody who was participating in the jail agreement. Um, and I said the earlier that he could get us that information, the better it would be so that we can, you know, interject that information into our supplemental budget discussion. Um, and what else? And then I did ask also if in fact the jail measure didn't pass, if we would have an opportunity to, to, you know, approach the, the jail agreement again. And at this point in time, the county executive wasn't willing to say that was an option. So, um, so anyway, it's, uh, it's disappointing, but it is what it is.
Okay, any, is there any action on this item at all? Terry? Oh, I'm sorry, Dan.
Just have a question for the mayor. I'm just wondering if you've considered, um, House Bill twenty-two sixty-three did pass and that does allow for, uh, counties to, to assess a, a sales tax to address mental health, uh, and I believe chemical dependency issues. If the county chooses not to exercise the implementation of that, uh, sales tax, then the city has an opportunity to do that, uh, at the end of twenty sixteen, I believe. I'm just wondering if, if you've considered that to address the second point of what, what you were talking about, those, um, treatment and intervention plans.
Well, and, and I have and, uh, I think the, you know, the legislature, it's good when the legislature gives local governments options. It would also be good if, um, they funded the things at the state level that they want us to do. And before we would go forward with putting something like that on the ballot, I think it behooves us to look at all of our different, um, assessments that we've done in the city and, and look at all of them and deci, and, and do some balancing because certainly we are gonna need more revenue both for our bed costs, regardless if we're in the jail or not in the jail, and for the alternative programs. But I would like us to have a very due diligent conversation about all the different assessments that the people in Bellingham are paying right now and make sure that we can prioritize, you know, what, what's the most important or should we make adjustments in size or whatever it could be so that we don't just add one more on the top. The other thing that's included in that assess, um, opportunity is cultural. And, um, we also have, you know, a museum that we subsidize quite heavily and at least to the tune of one-point-five million dollars a year, which would also go a ways in dealing with other programs. So I think we should just have a big conversation about it before we decide that, um, kinda do some fact finding and, and, uh, it, it's a good opportunity, but it does put the onus back again on local governments to take care of things that I believe the state or federal government should be doing.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, we're done with that and I will ask, is there anybody from the majority would like to reintroduce the, um, jail use agreement? Okay, seeing that, oh, yeah, this, the agreement that was rejected before. This is basically the, if I'm correct, the last time we'll be able to...
That was my understanding in talking to the county executive today, that it would need to be done tonight.
Yeah.
I, you know, Gene?
I know.
I would love to be able to do that. I, you know, I was really, really hoping that we would have gotten some movement, some communication from the, from the county exec on ways where we could get questions answered about the financial arrangement and, 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 and to look at that so that we're making sure that we're getting that, uh, a fair deal for our citizens on this. Because this is not the way I wanna see this go. But there'd been no movement at all and the way it currently lies, this, it puts Bellingham, it's not a, a right deal at this point for the citizens of, of Bellingham. And I, I know we could get there if we would've, but there was, uh, it wasn't, it, for whatever reason, it was a take it or leave it deal and I don't understand that. But it's, you know, this, I wish we could. I can't move it.
Okay?
Can I just make a, a clarification? Because I, I think that the, the framework for this proposal has been basically the same since the beginning, but there was some acknowledgement on the part of the county executive that when I said if we give all three tenths of a percent to the county, we won't have a way to pay our bed costs, there was some acknowledgement on the part of the county executive and the county council that as part of the jail agreement, there is a rebate that comes back to the city. But as I said, it's not enough to cover our, our bed costs and it's not enough to add any alternatives if that's what we would choose to do. So, but I, you know, I think there was motion there and there was motion on this, so I don't wanna completely, I'll be the good cop on this one, Terry, but I don't wanna completely, you know, negate the movement that they did make. I just personally believe it wasn't enough.
But that, there was, that movement didn't come, uh, after it was brought to the council and we raised questions and we, nothing after that point, you know, it was take it or leave it when it got to the council. And that's the part that's really disappointing because we wanted to be able to make this work. We wanted to be able to, and it was basically, you know, there wasn't any movement at that point, so that's where...
One of my biggest concerns is, like I mentioned months ago, is irregardless of the jail issue, if you put that over here and you think about all the things that were involved with the county and moving forward, I'm concerned by not swallowing, and if you wanna say it, say it, swallow a bad deal once in a while, you have to, but this is a big deal. It's a big swallow and I understand that and I respect the council majority, the decision's been made, but I'm just concerned about the ramifications down the road, whether it's EMS, whether it's the lake. I know some of the players over there, some of them aren't gonna be there after next year, after this year, but some of them are gonna be clamoring and using this against us and that's the way it's, it's gone in the past and I don't see that changing at all, but, um, all I know is it's, it's, it's a tough decision. Once in a while, it, it's easier to, to go with something that you don't entirely agree with, but, uh, we've discussed this for a long time, so if there isn't any more, um, discussion or any movement, then we will move on and thank the mayor for her efforts. And I will still say publicly to thank Jack for everything he did try to do. I mean, he, he hasn't given up. Maybe we'll see him before, after the next meeting, who knows? But, uh, it's, it's time to move on. I will now go to approval of the twenty, is it the twenty-seventh?
Twenty-seventh. I so move. I move to approval of July twenty-seventh meeting minutes.
Second. Motion been made and seconded, any discussion? All who are in favor will say aye. Aye. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, sir.
And just to be clear, it's the, it's the latest edition that we...
Yeah, I'm sorry, it's the amended edition, amended by Jack Weiss on eight, seven, of fifteen. Thank you very much, sir. I should've mentioned that. But I'm gonna miss you, Jack. I feel like I'm outta here already. Okay, uh, Terry, you wanna bring up your older new business you brought up this afternoon or you don't have to?
No.
We did it this afternoon.
Did we vote?
No, we didn't vote. All who are in favor of the minutes will say aye. Aye. All who oppose, motion carries seven zero.
Yeah, I think we went over this morning, we're fine.
Okay, we did. Any other older new business? Okay, executive session. We had three items. The first item was litigation man, uh, litigation matter, Holier versus City of Bellingham. Staff provide information on litigation matter, direction given, no action taken. Potential litigation, claim number two thousand fifteen dash twenty-one. Staff provide information on a potential litigation matter. At this time, the council shall entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to enter into a settlement agreement with the following general terms. Number one, the city will pay the claimant the sum of twenty-five thousand six hundred and fifty-nine dollars and four cents for damages related to the installation of a water meter. Number two, the claimant will waive its actual potential claims against the city. And number three, the claimant will release the city from any additional liability.
Move third, or move, move approval, second.
Motion been made and seconded, any discussion? All who are in favor will say aye. Aye. All who oppose, motion carries seven zero. Potential litigation, staff provide information on a potential litigation matter, direction given, no action taken, mayor's report. She's laughing. What does that mean? It's better to laugh than cry and after tonight, we could've been doing a lot of crying.
That means, that means you speak as fast as a teenager.
I know. I speak way too fast.
And I can't hear you. Um, a couple things that I'd like to mention. First of all, um, about six years ago, the city council, uh, made a very important decision that we would, uh, develop, uh, legacies and strategic commitments and metrics for our city. And I am a very strong proponent of both of those things. It's been six years and we, as the administration, would like to sit down with council members and members of the administration to make sure that the metrics that we're using are still relevant to what the goals are that the council had and to make sure that what we're measuring and how we're describing it translates to the public so they really know what we're accomplishing. And so, um, I, I'm proposing that we put together a work group and that, um, I, I would like it if two of the council members, I don't know, who was on it last time?
Terry and Stan.
Terry and Stan, so Terry...
Michael. Terry and Michael. That's a good group. We can call Stan if you want, but I think we did. He probably won't answer the phone.
Well, anyway, we, we, kind of like we did for PEG, so we had a couple council members and sit down and, and kinda get into the details.
It was interesting.
So anyway, I, if you just pick, pick your guys. Did Terry say yes?
Yes, Terry and Michael.
Uh, if, if, unless someone else really wants to do...
No, you're going to do it. Wouldn't wanna lose that institutional memory. Okay.
Well, we're thinking that we'll do like four meetings in the fall and we'll just... Well, we're thinking that we'll do like four meetings in the fall, and we'll just go through it and talk about what discussions we've had as department head team and administration, and just see where we are. One of the things that's motivating this is the contract to update the software is coming up, and I believe it's a fifty-thousand-dollar, a fifty-thousand-dollar contract, so we want to make sure we're satisfied with the metrics we're using before we sign that contract again.
At least we're not starting from scratch.
We are not starting from scratch. Okay, the other thing I have is Terry mentioned the christening of the boat, and I didn't remember to say that I broke the bottle, and I filled my shoe with champagne.
That's what you're supposed to drink it out of.
Yeah, drink it out of your glass slipper.
But it was kind of fun. I've never done that before in all my political career, so I was very nervous that I wouldn't break it. And then finally, for your approval, I am appointing Skylar Hinkley to the Greenway Advisory Committee.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries seven zero. Consent agenda?
Move approval.
I guess I'm done now.
Are you done? Yes, you're done, okay.
You got it.
Consent agenda moved by Terry, seconded by Roxanne?
Oh.
Or, you know, whatever. Okay, any discussion? All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries seven zero. Final consideration of ordinances, of ordinance, we only have one.
Agenda Bill two zero nine zero four. In ordinance amending the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen adopted budget appropriating thirty-five thousand dollars from estimated ending reserves in the library gift fund for the purchase of digital media, staff development, and summer reading software.
Move third and final?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call.
Michael Liliquist.
Aye.
Roxanne Murphy.
Aye.
Pinky Vargas.
Aye.
Jack Weiss.
Aye.
Terry Borneman.
Aye.
Dan Hamel.
Aye.
Ordinance passes, seven zero.
Okay, I want to thank Elizabeth and Marie for the purchase of the new clock. I think it's big enough now people can see it. The beep's a little annoying, but if you finish speaking before three minutes, you won't hear it, and people know it, and they respect it. So the next meeting of the Bellingham City Council will be August thirty-first. Meeting adjourned.[1783.16]